Their meeting of the. County and over Connecticut inland water courses commission to order at seven P M on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. On the. Screen I see. Commissioner William Monroe and Commissioner Jed Larson present. I was expecting Ed Smith, but he's not on the call yet. And I also see. Our agent Joe Wagner. So we'll take that as read for the roll call and seating of alternates. The next item would be changes in order to the agenda. Are there any proposals to revise the agenda? Okay, if we're good to go, then we have next on the agenda, the approval of our minutes. From our last meeting, a special meeting on May twenty seventh, I like a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that, but there is one what I thought was a typo.
Could well be.
Section eight D, it says code complaint instead of, I think probably cold compliant.
Okay, let's see which. Okay, is item eight B.
He isn't dog.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, fourth line down in that paragraph.
Okay, I see this code. On my, I'm looking at the current posted version. But take note of that and we'll. Move on to. Accept the minutes as corrected.
I second it.
Okay, and. Let's see, I don't know that we need a roll call vote, but we'll go ahead with it. Commissioner Larson.
I.
Mister Monroe.
I.
And I, Acting Chairman Elliott, both I as well. So the motion, oh, I see now that. Ed Smith is on the call. Note that for the minutes being recorded, Ed, we are approving the minutes of the. May twenty seven, I'm sorry, the June, yeah, May twenty seventh meeting. But I believe you were, I don't recall if you were present at that meeting. I've got to go back on them and see if you were. Okay, you were absent, so you abstain in any event. So we have a motion carrying three zero zero to pass. To prove the special meeting minutes. Mr. Smith.
Sorry, I'm late. I went to town hall. I should have, I should have read everything more clearly. I can barely hear, so I'm going to hook up some speakers while you're talking.
Okay. That's why I have headphones. Not to mention the fact that the noise cancelling, so we can. Zone out some of the background. I got kicked out of my office because my kids and grandkids are. Visiting and my study has been commandeered from my grandson's bedroom. Okay. That was an aside that doesn't need to be in the minutes. Okay, so we've got approval of the minutes and go back to the agenda. Okay, the next item of number five would be public comment. There are members of the public. I only see one present, but do we want to have any? Comment on any of the items on the agenda or inquiries of the board? Commission.
Yes, this is Kevin Shays. I bought that property, my wife and I, on four thirty six Lake Road. And. Were interested as we talked about on the site walk back in December, but taking down some trees. To get a view of the lake and. I'd, my builder had spoken with Joe Wagner. Early on in the process and the feedback we got that this was something we're going to need to bring before the board. So I want to know if this was the appropriate time to talk about it, or at least suggest maybe a site walk or find out what I need to do to. Advance this.
Well, in fact, speaking for the commissioner, I can say that we could. Discuss in a general way your intentions, but really what we need is permit application. To form as a basis, you know, for further discussion and for subsequent approval of the intended work. Since it seems, my understanding from Agent Wagner is that, and per our discussion previously with the commission. It did seem that what you were proposing was beyond the scope of what we had expected on the. Previous sidewalk and in discussing the application somehow. From what was conveyed to us by Agent Wagner, it seemed that the. Scope of the work you were posing as your builder or your arborist or who was going to be doing the work. Was more extensive than we had expected and considered approved. So we would need another. Permit application to go forward with that, or even if just the agent were to review it. You know, activities require permit applications. So. The, the general gist, I guess, is that you want to open up some vista. Correct from your, from your residence. The latest correspondence I saw suggested that you were. Proposing at the very least to wait until you had your first floor. And in place so that you had a sense of what needed to be removed. To achieve the desired view, and that seems like a very sensible. Process, and I would think that at that point, we could certainly entertain. A application and do the site walk to. You know, get a clearer sense and from your point of view, you know, right now, if we visited the site, it would be an abstract. Imagination, as you will, and if we wait until there's something more concrete to talk about, I, I believe that that would be. Best for all concerned.
Agree, and where we are with the project now, we do have the first floor in foundations and first floors in and. So we would, we would have a pretty good idea of, you know, what we would want, a better idea now of what we'd want to do. Than we did early on in the project and. I'm a year with the, you know, the leaves in full bloom. This would really be an ideal time to look at it.
Especially lush with the weather that we've been having lately. Okay, well, so as you say, I, my recommendation would be to, to give us a. Proposal, you know, make an application for it and so, so you can work with Agent Wagner. In order to give us the, again, it's really about a framework. You're going to be talking about essentially applying to. Take down trees in an upland review area. Agent Wagner can certainly. Evaluate. On site, the proposal, the specific. Work that you want done and then convey it to the board at our, sorry, to the commission at our next meeting. So, you know, in between that kind, and we would, you know, we can't, you know, without an application, really. It's like not having a motion on the floor for a meeting. You don't have anything really to talk about. We can't. Approve anything if there isn't an application to be approved.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that sounds unfair enough, and I'll be in touch with Agent Wagner and we'll proceed accordingly.
Okay, any comments by other members of the commission? Okay, then we'll. Return to the agenda. Number, item number six, the. Agents report on enforcement actions.
I got.
Something's been closed out.
Yeah, I don't have anything this month. I know it's. Closed out thirty three Route eighty seven. Mr. Bones' property, we talked about that in the last meeting. And also the. Route six Scrabble that too. The order was lifted, I don't have the actual date, but it was. Mid-June, maybe early June, I think. We also discussed that in the last meeting too.
And nothing new, I take it. No, okay, good. No news is good news in this instance for sure. Okay, then the next item on the agenda, because this is the first. Meeting in July of the new, the new fiscal and electoral year, we have to have the election of officers. And, you know, basically, we need a chair and a vice chair. And there are only four of us on this screen that are eligible to apply.
So I'll make a motion that we elect George Elliott as chairman.
I'll second that.
Now somebody can move that the nominations be closed.
I'll move that the nominations be closed.
I'll second that.
We'll take that as read, so I just want to make one comment before y'all. Raise your hands and say aye, and that is that when we get to item number nine. My, my continuing to serve as chair is somewhat contingent. On the outcome of our discussion there, insofar as I feel quite comfortable in chairing a Zoom meeting. Where I can put on these noise cancelling headphones and where everybody's speaking directly to a microphone. And the. Hearing impairment from which I suffer does not impede my ability to conduct the meeting. In-person meetings, not so much. And I don't know how hybrid meetings are going to work. So just saying, and having said, we can move on and I'll ask for vote on the motion. Which is to elect Mo as Chair of the. Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two term. All in favor, raise your hands. And say aye for the record.
Aye.
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 The motion carries three, zero, one abstention. Anybody willing to serve as a vice chair, which just means you got to be backup. In case I'm out of town during a meeting, although that's no excuse if we're doing it online, is it? Ed, will you be willing to serve?
Is that a. Were you gonna say something? Bill, were you gonna say something?
No.
All right, I'd like to nominate Jed Larson for the vice chair.
I would second that.
Ted, are you willing to serve in this capacity? I know you have other commandments.
I am not willing to serve in that capacity based on being the chairman of the planning and zoning commission.
Point well taken, so we will consider that nomination withdrawn.
Well, then I nominate William Monroe for the vice chair.
Watch out for this guy.
And I will second that nomination.
It looks like you've been sandbagged, William, but I hope that you are not unwilling to, so really. Doesn't require a lot of coaching.
I just don't think I could handle leading a meeting. I don't even know the. I haven't really even figured out how to be a. A commission member quite yet, so I'm not real confident about being a vice chair. I, I would only be, it would only be like, but, you know, like, just kind of. I would define being vice chair until I had to be the chairman, and then I'd be like, I don't know what to do.
I hear exactly what you're saying there.
I believe Bill's background and talents that far exceed mine. I am the weak link on the committee. I am more there to fill in for lack of warrants. So, William, I would suggest maybe you should do this.
Well, required to have a vice chair? I think it says in the bylaws, right? I know I serve on. Wyndham's Wetlands Commission, and we don't have, we just have a chair. We don't have a vice chair.
Let me, let me just check on that. I don't have the. Bylaws open, but I'll have them open now. It's in section. Seven point two. Under electoral offices, it says it doesn't refer, but.
Yeah, I think it's section.
There are references to a vice chairman throughout the. Throughout the document.
Yeah, section five point one says officers of the commission will consist of a chairperson and a vice chairperson.
Now, I would have to point out that the. Vice Chair essentially. Is required only to preside at meetings in the absence of the chair. The rest of the obligations. Pertain only to the chair. So. I guess the question is, do you think we can get you up to speed? Running one of these meetings, which basically consists of following the agenda. You know, if it. If. If it comes to that, you know, we can always cancel meetings in the absence of someone to. Preside over the meeting or hearing. But of course, that's awkward and. Doesn't serve the public as well.
So here's my offer. If we have to have a vice chair, and Mr. Monroe is not willing to do that. I would be willing to do that, but under the stipulation that Jed Larson, if I have to take over a meeting. Jed Larson will continuously update me with. If I'm making an error messing up, you know, or what I should do next.
You mean, a little backup here in the, in the running of the meeting.
Correct.
Jed, do you think you could work with, especially for online, you know, you can do this with chat? You know, send a message to everyone or to. Just to Ed Smith.
I can certainly try that. I have not done the chat thing yet, but I think I can get through that. I think, you know, the. You have not missed a meeting, George, chair in a meeting since we've started and so.
Well, I would hope not, as a matter of fact, but I'm just saying that, you know, that's really the only responsibility that I share. And, you know, with, with backup, if, if Ed would be willing to serve in that capacity, we then have some name to. Submit to the Board of Selectmen.
And just to let you know, I'm now totally deaf in my left ear and there's a constant ringing, so I really have. It's funny, I really have a hard time picking up with my computer what's happening, and even in the hall sometimes it's hard for me to hear what's. I always got to turn my right ear, so that's part of my handicap here.
Yeah, I, I commented on that myself earlier, and I will commend your attention. Noise cancelling headphones. And a jack to plug into your laptop or whatever computer you're using, it will. Save you a lot of grief in terms of trying to follow the conversation. I truly. I've. Found it almost indispensable. Myself, working as the chair of this commission. Okay, so. Back to the matter at hand, I think we can agree that. By. Unanimous consent, Ed Smith will serve as the. Vice Chair of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. Thank you. Now, back to the agenda. Okay, item number eight, the revision of the I W W C regulations, as you will. No doubt recall, actually, Billy, when we're on the commission, we made a stab at bringing our regulations up to date. Via the, the state of Connecticut, which of course, the Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Environment and Energy, excuse me. Will. Periodically update regulations, periodically the legislature will update the, the law. That underlies the regulations governing. Inland Wetland and Water Course activities. And we were trying to get our regulations in sync with changes. Now, we got to the point where I think we were ready to roll. Except that we would need to hire, well, we would need to schedule a hearing. And have our attorney review it prior to submission. The last time we discussed the matter, I contacted our attorney, Mark Brants. And inquired about what the turnaround would be like and so forth. And he indicated that it would be well to wait until the end of the. Past legislative session, just in case the legislature. Passed something or, you know, made some changes to the. Applicable statutes or created new requirements that might have an effect on our regulations. As far as I can tell, nothing like that has happened. You know, and I checked with the Haller and Sage website to see about that, and I think that, you know, we would be clear now. So what I would like would be a motion to submit our proposed. New regulation or proposed revised regulations for legal review. Prior to a hearing and potential adoption by the board.
I'll make a motion that we submit our updated regulations for legal review.
I second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to. Again, seek legal review of our post regulation revisions. Any further comments? Injections, then I'll ask for a vote. Those in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries for zero zero.
George, I have a question about that.
Yes, Will.
Is that in the. The. Where can you find that information?
Hmm, you know, I think I'll have to email you a copy. I don't think that they're, you know, they're certainly, you know, the, the regulations that we are nominally operating under are posted online. But those are last reviewed and revised ages ago. The proposed revision. Is in draft form, and of course, I have that file. And if I make a note to myself here, I will send you a copy when I have convenient access to the emails. Server and all of that, okay? And then you can take a look at, I think I'll try to send you the copy that's been annotated to show you what's being updated. But in any event, I'll get you the most current. Version of our regulation revisions.
Thank you.
George, is there any chance we could get that posted on the website as a, you know, draft update?
I think it would be good. I would like to do that prior to the hearing.
Okay.
As, you know, I think that's a really good idea. But let's run it through legal first, then we can post it for. Public, public accommodation. Prior to the hearing that's required. Okay, and with, you know, hopefully with enough lead time. My thought on this is that we could hold a hearing immediately prior to a meeting. You know, piggyback, piggyback the two events, so. As to save time and effort and be able to then follow in the hearing if. Approval is on the agenda and we can do it. Barring, of course, some. Glaring problem brought to light as the course of a hearing. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Resumption of in-person meetings. Obviously, some boards and commissions, the Board of Selectmen is the meeting. And will be, you know. Being at least partly in person or maybe some hybrid. Affair. So our choices are then to resume in-person meetings, to. Resume meetings. to resume meetings in a hybrid format that allows for remote participation. Or to continue with remote meetings solely. And as I conveyed to you in the email message, I believe that the the advice from Haller and Sage, the, again, the, the firm to which our own attorney is associate would be that we could do any of those things. So we really could continue to have meetings virtually or meetings online as our sole format. I'd like to hear what other members of the Commission have to say. Going screen wise, Bill, you're up. Do you have any thoughts about whether we want in meeting person or whatever?
I'm fine with the Zoom meetings. I live pretty close to the Town Hall, so I'd be fine driving down there and I'd be fine if everybody wanted to go down there and if you wanted to do what you're doing from home, I'd be okay with that too. I'm really flexible on this.
Let's see, next in order, Jed.
Well, I've wrestled with the same issue over on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We were going to try to do our next meeting in person. I'm not sure that we'll get there because I'm not sure that we have the technology things worked out for the hybrid or whatever. So I'm going to go over and look at that tomorrow with Jim Halcy. But my thoughts is, is you had mentioned, the acoustics this way are much better and easier to hear. And I find that displaying information is also much improved on a Zoom platform. Everybody can look at their screen and see whatever document or diagram or whatever we do. So, so I do think there's a lot of advantages to continuing the Zoom, not to mention. Uh, like Bill, I live very close to Town Hall, easy for me to get there. Not everybody is, and I think we, we stand a better chance of getting whether it's, you know, the town engineer or, or our attorney or whatever, much easier and, and other members of the public to you know, join us if we're, we're doing it electronically. So I think I'm kind of leaning toward, I think there's some significant advantages to doing the meetings online. But it's been so long since we had one in person. I was going to do one just so I could see how it goes, but there's a lot about Zoom I really like.
Okay, Ned, do you have any particular feelings about?
I was going to say either Zoom or Town Hall, but Jed made some really good points and I definitely lean towards Zoom, but doing the hybrid, I just did that for a whole year was at school and I never want to do that again for the rest of my life.
Okay, what were the issues with the hybrid format? I'm just curious because I haven't experienced it myself.
Well, I would have thirteen or fourteen students in my classroom live. And many of them were disruptive students. And then I would have thirteen or fourteen students at home. And when you look at the screen, you're not looking at the students in the room, stuff starts to break down in the room. I'm now leaving the kids hanging at home with no, I'm not paying any attention. I prefer everybody to be in one place.
Gotcha. Okay, well, that's reasonable. And frankly, I think as I said earlier, I have a strong preference for continuing with Zoom because it makes my life as Chair much, much easier. And I think that I can be much more effective at recognizing what either commissioners or members of the public have to say and not have to ask for repeats. So I'm going to propose that we continue with Zoom meetings. And that we be open to possibility of either in-person or hybrid meetings if it appears that members of the public or persons with business before the Commission would be better served by in-person meetings.
Sounds fair enough.
Okay, well, let's take that as read. We'll schedule our next meeting for Zoom and we'll keep, as I said, we'll just keep, keep the possibility open. But so far, it seems to me that everyone who's come before the Commission with business or, you know, whatever issues they may have had, everybody's been well served by this process. I don't think that anybody has been left out of the process by our holding the meetings on Zoom. Okay, so item number ten, Agent Report. We've got some pending applications, all of them that are eligible for administrative approval.
Yeah, we got a, got a few of those, had four of them. It's actually working. I posted the legal notices today, so most of them are approved. Have one, which is one oh four West Street. There's a geothermal, closed loop geothermal system, so well, heat pump that pumps down into the ground through its own loop and then back up. And that was in a hundred foot upland review area. There's a, a site map on the, online that shows where it was, but it's like right on the edge of the hundred foot upland review area. There's another one that installation, it was four twenty Lake Road, installation of a standby generator and an electrical outlet which involved a trench. And that's, that was in the front yard, so on the Lake Road side of the, of the property. And that was within a two hundred foot upland review area of Andover Lake. The other one is at two forty-two Lake Road. That's construction of a stone stairway and a walkway within the two hundred foot upland review area. So the property sloped down. They're going to put some natural stone steps in there. They're going to excavate out, I think it was four yards approximately of dirt and then they're going to put some gravel drainage underneath the stairway to help with runoff going down towards the lake. So they're doing that for the, excavate, put the gravel and then put walk, stone walkway around the deck in the back of the property. So on the, on the lake side of the property.
Yeah, a quick question here, just to interject. Jed, under the lake regulations, is that kind of hardscaping count as impervious surface that has to be remediated or accommodated?
I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head. And I would think I'll have to go take a look. You know, we had talked about putting in a driveway, but I hadn't really considered the walkway. Now you can consider it, you know, walkway is kind of like a patio.
It's, you know, depending on how it's constructed, it could certainly be a more or less impervious surface. And, you know, if it's like pavers, not so much. If it's gravel, not so much. But you know, again, I wonder if that.
I, I would ask, yeah, I would ask Agent Wagner to, you know, go over and, and make sure that he's in sync with Agent Halcy on, on how that plays out. And I'm hoping to meet with Jim tomorrow and so we could talk about a little bit, get our ducks in a row before Joe goes over and talks to him.
Yeah, I think that's the, the, the lake rigs have kind of. This is some conflicting because, you know, it might not be like wetlands doesn't really have jurisdiction over, you know, like a zoning, like you can't force somebody.
Right, yeah. And the one that doesn't have jurisdiction, that is the remediation part is on lake rigs are planning and zoning. But, you know, hey, there's probably not going to be a building permit pulled for a, for a sidewalk, right? So, uh, maybe this is the only chance to bring it to the attention of planning and zoning.
So, so I guess, yeah, the question I, I, I had there on this particular issue is how, does the walkway go all the way down to the lake?
Um, no, it doesn't. There's, um, there's a site plan posted online, but basically it comes, there's a, there's a driveway. Um, and then the stairs is going to go down the hill and then basically to the end of the deck. And then there's a walkway going along the deck. Not to the lake though, no, it's, uh, it's on the far, like it's closer to, I think it's, it was a hundred and ninety-three feet or something from the lake. So it's pretty far into the upland review area. Yeah, I, I was wondering that too because the, the walkway, I think if it went down to the actual water, would probably have to get reviewed by the full commission because it would be at the shore of the lake.
I'll have to ponder that one and go look and see what, you know, even if we're less than a hundred, if I guess it's going to hinge on, do we, do we define the walkway that they're going to put in is impervious or not? If it's impervious, it probably triggers some sort of remediation. If it's a pervious design, it might not, but I, I'd like to go, you know, take a look at the actual regs to to figure that out a little bit better, you know, before.
Yeah, I was.
Conclusion on that.
Yeah, I was confused as to whether or not, like, like if it doesn't. It seemed like the way the regs were written that you needed to, if you were applying for a zoning permit. So you would need to, like a zoning permit would need to be required before the nutrient worksheet would be triggered.
I, I'm, I'm not sure that's true. In, you know, we're looking, if there's something that wetlands agent or the Commission is acting on and it has the, it, it needs remediation because it's increasing the impervious surface. We're expecting that, you know, the, the Wetlands Commission would uphold, you know, ensure that that were, were done as part of their approval process. Now, if we don't have our words quite right on that, and, and I recognize that the first go around on issuing all those regs, we're probably far from perfect on, on ginning those things up. And that's why this happens to be the first issue that's come up since we've approved them. So it's, it's good that, you know, we're looking at it and and we'll have to go take a look to see if there's some weak spots that we need to improve or, or maybe we like, you know, the way it is, but we'll take a look at it. But I don't know the answer to that question right off the top of my head.
Well, there's no action we can take here, but this, since it was, in this instance, really just a thought that pertains to, you know, something that we would normally leave to the agent for review, as he pointed out, a hundred and ninety-three feet from the lake is damn close to two hundred.
It is, yeah.
You know, and, and only, and really only minor differences in construction would make a difference between what we regarded as an impermeable surface or permeable surface. So that has to, I think, discretionary item. But again, some communication with the building official. I don't think that a nutrient allocation worksheet is necessarily required here, but certainly some thought toward potential remediation.
Well, the worksheet's not required if it was less than a hundred square feet.
Well, it looks like there's over two hundred square feet of, of surface in the, when I look at the plan there, it's about thirty-one by five and then about thirty-five by five. So you know, due to arithmetic and we're well over two hundred square feet. And again, it's illustrated as stone steps and stone steps. Although the stones are impermeable, they have cracks between them that make the surface semi-permeable, reducing runoff. And as I think Agent Wagner pointed out, it's going to be on top of you know, some kind of substrate sand or gravel typically that. To crush stone for, as a base for the steps. It's, it could well be a semi-permeable surface and thus.
I think that was their idea. When I spoke to the applicant, that was his idea because they were having runoff issues from the driveway. So the thought was to excavate, put the crushed stone in as a, as a catch, kind of like a catch base and infiltration base and then put stones on top. And then they made sure to indicate that they weren't going to mortar the joints of the walkway so that the rainwater had a chance to get into the stone. So in a way, they're already providing for some some runoff control in the plan.
Okay.
And that would be the best of all worlds. It, you know, there was a, a big article and I, I don't have my lake rig file, you know, sitting out in front of me right this minute, don't want to get it. But in the Hartford Current, a couple of weeks ago, there was a big full page article on rain gardens and, and designing them and all this and how, you know, people are proactively going off to do this to minimize stormwater runoff. And, and that's really what we would like to, to have the philosophy be, what is each person who's living along the lake doing to, you know, try and protect the lake? And I imagine Jeff Hayes, because he's part of the Alpoa, you know, I don't know what his thing is there. We can find out tomorrow night at the Alpoa meeting, but I know he's, you know, certainly wanting to take care of the lake.
Well, okay, enough discussion on that. Continue again, back to Agent Wagner to continue with the actions.
Yeah, this one, the last approval was, um, Jim Halcy's application to, uh, construct twelve foot by ten foot wooden deck within the hundred foot upland review area. So wasn't directly attached to his house, but it was, uh, pretty much right up against it. And it's, uh, yeah, it's in the upland area. It did that a while ago, so. Not sure if there was, pretty straightforward application. There was an intermittent stream that flowed through the back of his property. And the deck is, looks like it's about forty feet from the, from the stream. Like I said, it was right off the back of his, uh, his existing screen porch. Um, there are some stone steps there and he wanted to replace it with a small deck, so. That was that one. That was approved, uh, approved in mid-June, sixteenth of June. So that's, that was it for the permits for this month.
I did have a question, Joe, on, on the, I saw in the paper that you had approved the permit over at eighty-five Lakeside Drive for the ship. And I was wondering if, if you had gotten with Jim and worked through the issues of, you know, the water runoff mitigation with respect to that particular permit. Because I know Jim's been not as available as he would like to be.
Yeah, that was, uh, it was difficult with the, um, the lack of, uh, like admin support in the building department and then Jim's, uh, Jim's personal issues, uh, that one, that one was kind of, uh, um, on the wetland side, I, I issued it to take care of the the permit, but yeah, it did. the permit, but yeah, did, did have some zoning issues that, that still need to be, still need to be addressed. And there was some miscommunication. The, the, the property owner wants to cooperate.
Well, the shed is up.
Yeah, yeah, I know. He had been, I, I spoke with him, and, and he had, he moved it back according to what Mr. John Valenti had told him previously, what he thought was the appropriate setback, and I, I don't think, I think it's 37 feet from the lake now, and I think, according to Jim, it has to be 50 feet, so.
Okay, yep, and, and those issues, I was strictly
It's a separate
concerned about the nutrient allocation worksheet for putting the shed back there. And do you know if there was a nutrient allocation worksheet?
I don't think there was, but I can't say for sure.
Yep. So so my, my overall assessment is, for whatever reason, you know, we're getting off to a rocky start with this, how, how to implement the lake rigs.
Yeah, I think that we, we need some clear definition, like, when, when we, when we need to what do we need to require the, the nutrient allocation one would be good, because I don't, I'm not really sure when to ask for it, or even if I can ask for it, you know, I can refer them to the zoning agent, but I'm not sure what else I can do other than that.
Well, in, in
When I should, you know, like, if I should withhold the permit, or if I can legally.
Well, I'll go take, you know, the next follow-on question is that, you know, I don't know that he got the building permit to put the shed back there.
He applied, I'm pretty sure he applied for one.
Yep, I, I know he's applied for it. I just don't know that it was ever approved.
Yeah.
And, and that was supposed to be, you know, the, the final catch for nutrient allocation worksheet.
Right.
But we'll, I'll, I'll work on that one with Jim. But you and Jim need to be, you know, working together as much as you can, and
We're, we're, we're doing what we can right now. No, I mean, the, the building department's a bit of a mess right now, so we're, we're trying.
So, gotcha. I just wanted to hear your side of the story before I go talk to Jim tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'd like to get it straightened out, so I know, you know, when to bring up the allocation worksheet too. I mean, it feels like it's almost more of a Wetlands issue than, than a zoning issue, but.
Right, in a sense, I think you're right, but the way it was constructed, we had input and, you know, we discussed those regulations, but it was, it was absolutely a planning and zoning commission and planning and building department implementation. I, I think that the role of inland Wetlands here was to sign off on, oh, this is a good idea to protect the lake, but we're not responsible for enforcement of that regulation. It's not part of our regulation. So I think that what we're looking for as inland Wetlands is simply a heads-up. You know, since applications will come to inland Wetlands first, you know, we have to sign off before planning and zoning is going to take it up. So I think that that's, you know, that, that we and you as agent could be raising the need, but you're not responsible for reviewing or approving or anything of that sort, or even making sure that it actually gets done.
Yeah, that's the, the thing I was running into, was like, sitting on a, a pending application for, for multiple months that really fit all the you know, it fit, it fit within the, the bounds of approval and, and in the wetlands, I felt, but I, you know.
Yeah, right, you're, you're, you're enforcing the Wetlands regulation, and then the ball has to get passed to somebody else to take up the matter of whether it means zoning credit, zoning regulations, and, you know, that includes both location via V boundaries and satisfaction of special regulations for protecting the lake.
Well, I do encourage the, you know, the, the working together on this, because I think that it's in the zoning regulations, because we have the ability to locally create regulations, where I'm not sure that the inland Wetlands, I could be wrong on this. I think the inland Wetlands Agency is obligated to issue regulations consistent with the state. And so that's why the zoning regulations, it's, it's to protect the wetlands, protect the lake. But we had the only ability to put in any sort of a, an enforcement mechanism, so we do need to, you know, work closely together on that, because it's to protect the significant environmental issue with the lake is, is what it's intended to do.
Okay, well, in any of that, we have the report on the agent actions, so I'll ask now if there are other items to bring before the commission, is there any other business?
Oh, I think it probably, Jed might know this. I have a tree on a piece of land down on the lake that looked like it got hit by lightning, and it's probably about 30, maybe 40 feet from the lake. Maple tree. Just wondered, do you need a permit to cut down a hazard tree like that, or is that just, just get it out of the type of thing, or what?
Well, I think that, that's really a question for Agent Wagner, but because I've got a tree that struck by lightning, and I'll tell you what I was going to do, and I thought about talking to Joe, and I said, no, we've got, you know, the tree companies are coming by, you know, for the town stuff in, in cutting down trees all over the place. What they don't do is they don't stump grind. And so I think if you cut down a tree with, and leave the stump in place, you're not impacting the wetlands or the upland of the wetlands. And that's how I kind of looked at the application as we've gone through this. But if you're going to grind down in the stump, remove the stump, grind the stump, whatever, then I would feel the need to put in a wetlands application. Now that I've given you my thought, we'll let the expert provide the, the real answer.
I might demur on that myself, as a matter of fact, Jed. But yeah, Agent Wagner, what do you think about that kind of situation? We have some, some serious dead tree issues around town, and a good number of them are going to be in wetlands or in upland review areas.
Yeah, the, I know the regulations regulate what they call clearcutting, and they have kind of a weird the definition for clearcutting is open to interpretation. I'm trying to think where it is. But it's like a certain number of trees that are a certain size within certain area, and it's like if you remove all of them, so really like one, one tree here or there wouldn't fall under that definition of clearcutting, so.
Mindy.
Um, in Coventry, I know that we, and I don't know, I think this might also be a state regulation, that people have the right to maintain their property as of right, so if they have a tree that is a hazard, they have a right to take it down for property maintenance. I could be wrong, but I know there's like some as-of-right property maintenance thing in there as well.
Thanks for pulling that thought up, because we can certainly look at our proposed new regulations to make sure that something like that is in there.
I think there is a definition of clearcut in there somewhere, and I was just looking at planning and zoning, and I thought it was there. But I do remember, you know, when we were talking about the, the pond over off of 316 there, and Agent Wagner discussed that if it was on private property, we could cut down those trees. Because homeowners have a right to go do maintenance. But since that was not a private homeowner, that they needed a permit to go in and do that, and that's, that's why we decided to require the town to submit a permit to go in and cut the trees down around the edge of the pond.
Yeah, because they were working in the wetland per se. They were working in a water course.
They're going to pull some stuff out of there, yeah. Well, it was both, but I remember Agent Wagner citing chapter and verse out of the Wetlands rigs, because I was pleased at that point to know I wasn't a lawbreaker.
Okay, so let's, we'll check that out, but yeah, we have, it's, it seems like, and rational speaking, let's say, it shouldn't be required, a permit should not be required for that kind of activity. And what we want to do here is to double-check the regulations to make sure that that is the case. Okay. Back to the agenda. Okay, item number 12, our next regular meeting will be held on the first Monday of August, which is August 2. It will be at 7:00 PM, and as we previously discussed, it will be on the Zoom platform. You all may be aware that our excellent board clerk, Mindy, is departing that position. And even though I tried to induce her by keeping it in a Zoom format, I'm afraid that we're going to have to find a replacement, or, well, let's put it this way. We're going to have to hope that the folks down in Town Hall find a replacement for us, and soon. So, Mindy, thanks very much for your assistance, did a good aid, and with valuable contributions based on your service in other towns, so our appreciation, and good luck with whatever it is that comes next.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I've definitely learned a lot throughout Wetlands PVC and all the ZPA meetings, so definitely I've learned a lot, and I've loved listening to our, hour-long meetings, multiple hour-long meetings, so. And the building department does, I think, have some people interested, so that is some good news, but I definitely will miss taking the minute.
Did a great job, Mindy.
Good. With that, I believe I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, motion by Smith, second by Monroe, all in favor. Okay, all in favor, 400. The meeting is adjourned at 8:03 PM. I look forward to seeing y'all in a few weeks. I will be available for that meeting, so nobody else is going to be on the hook.
Well, and, and if I could just, you know, before we go off
Before you
Appreciate Ed stepping up to be the vice chair. I know George has got tremendous experience doing this wetland stuff. I, I have struggled a little bit harder than I think George does. I'm making sure I'm ready to go run a planning and zoning meeting, and so, you know, to think that, you know, a vice chair can step up at the last minute and serve the public well, I think that's a bit, you know, we should always consider rescheduling to where the chairman can do it, because he's the guy who really has the, the continuity of all the little other things that are going on in the background that you bring to the meeting to help guide it in the right direction, and
I'm certainly willing to accommodate that, Jed. I, I really don't want to have to pass the buck on any of these meetings, and again, my sole qualification really is that I've had a lot of experience running meetings.
And, and you do it well.
Thank you. Okay, so, once again, with that, the meeting will stand adjourned, and we can depart by pressing the little red leave button down in the lower right-hand corner of your screen.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Live long and prosper.